I'm going to call the April 22nd, 2025 emergency call meeting to order. If you would please stand, I'm going to lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning asking for guidance and direction. We all know why we're here. Public safety is very serious to this board, to all county employees, our sheriff's office. We're asking that you please guide us through these waters and keep in mind the public safety of our citizens here in Swanee County. We ask that your will be done. Forgive us for our sins and our trespassers. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the highest states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I wasn't here a week ago today, and obviously there was some pretty big rocks chunked at our county administrator who also wasn't present. I'm going to say a few words because I didn't have a chance to do so a week ago today as the chairman. Unfortunately, some of these choppy waters fall on my back to weight us through and try to steer this ship, the ship of the county and the well-being of all of its citizens. So I think this board, I know this board, takes public safety and our responsibility in conducting that very seriously. We all work for 47,000 people that live in this county, maybe 48 by now, and I think we want to see the best job done by our staff and all the employees of the county as possibly could be done. But, you know, I'm not here to make friends. I'm not here to create enemies, but I am here for transparency and the truth and to figure out what happened, where it went wrong, and how we make it better. I don't believe, I don't believe that nothing bad should come out of an audit. Two things happen. Either you find out there's nothing wrong, or you find out there's something wrong and we fix it and we learn from it and we go and we do better the next time. That's what I believe. But, you know, at the end of the day, if I lose some friends for where I stand on this matter, I create some enemies. The search for transparency is all that I'm after. I wasn't here. I didn't get to hear everything firsthand, and unfortunately, the clerk has apologized profusely. The sound equipment wasn't picking up. For those of you in the public that don't understand why there's no video, the video was working, the sound was not. So we don't have any audio from the clerk's office to support the video. That's why it didn't record. I don't know why. I can't answer that, but they have it fixed. But I'm going to give a little bit of a backstory. So about eight weeks ago, I myself had asked for a meeting with the sheriff's office as well as the EOC employees and any other accounting staff that they wanted to bring. I asked for that meeting to be held at Mr. Morrison's office, which was a neutral site. I had heard the rumblings of some tension between our employees and their employees, and I wanted to get to the bottom of it as well as figure out what the financial situation looked like with the EOC and all of this hurricane storm money that was flying around. We had the date set and the time set. Couple days prior to that meeting, they canceled the meeting. Said there wasn't a reason to show up. They had everything under control. There was no reason to have a meeting. You fast forward to April 1st, Mr. Greg Scott goes out on April 1st for open heart surgery, major surgery. I don't remember the number of bypasses, but multiple bypasses done, in which was the reason why he is not here today, and he wasn't here on April 15th when Mr. Volz made allegations against him. Now, I do have an email from Mr. Scott. I've only spoken to Mr. Scott on the phone one time since his procedure. I take life more seriously and someone's health more seriously than what we do here. I did speak to Mr. Scott last night for the first time, but he also sent me an email. And I'm not going to get into the weeds of this, but I am going to read one paragraph of it that says his stance on where he stands on the allegations levied against him. And I quote, "I also want to go on the record to strongly deny working against emergency management and take strong offense to the slander statements made in the most public way. I have spent over 36 years serving the citizens of Swanee County, always putting what is best for the citizens above any personal gain. I feel my service record has been unblemished up until Lieutenant Volz blasted me last Tuesday night." Second paragraph, I quote, "I very much look forward to the upcoming audit with Cherry Beckett Advisory LLC to clear all Board of County Commission employee names. We will be working to provide any needed information asked for by the audit team. We will be here to serve the citizens and commission to show complete transparency." That's from Mr. Scott. And I read that because he's not here to say that himself. So in saying that, I'm going to read, I'm going to read this resolution. I'm going to read the thing in its entirety. We have a lot of folks who don't get these emails. I don't know who don't get on the website. They just watch the YouTube videos. I've been told that multiple times. So I'm going to read the resolution. A resolution affirming Swanee County's commitments to public safety and proper administration of Swanee County's Emergency Operations Center, declaring that the necessity of an audit for the Emergency Operations Center, requiring all county employees to cooperate with the audit. Whereas Florida Statute 252.38 declares that safeguarding the life and property of the citizens of a county is an innate responsibility of the governing body of each county. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida, declares that it has no greater obligation to the citizens of Swanee County than to protect and preserve their life and property. Whereas Florida Statute 252.38 requires counties to create and administer a county emergency management agency. And whereas Swanee County has operated its emergency management agency since at least the mid-1970s. And whereas in Swanee County Agreement 2018-11, the county contracted the Swanee County Sheriff to operate and administer the county's emergency management agency. And whereas the sheriff has designated his deputy, Chris Volz, to serve as his agent for purposes of administration of the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency. And whereas Paragraph 8 of Agreement 2018-11 requires the sheriff to be responsible for the submission and administration of all emergency management grant applications and documentation. And whereas at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissions on April 15th, 2025, Deputy Volz appeared before the commission as the head of Swanee County Emergency Management Agency. And whereas during the meeting, Deputy Volz informed the board that at least $7 million of available grant funds have been irrevocably lost or forfeit due to the failure to timely or properly apply for said funds. And whereas prior to Deputy Volz informing the board of the lost $7 million of available grant funds, the members of the board had no knowledge of the funds or any issues surrounding procurement of said funds. And whereas Deputy Volz further informed the board that he was pursuing tens of millions of dollars worth of additional grant funds for projects that were therefore unknown to the board, to the members of the board. And whereas Deputy Volz further informed the board that the pursued projects were in jeopardy of failing to obtain grant funding. And whereas Deputy Volz accused county administrator Greg Scott of being the person responsible for the lost grant monies and currently jeopardized grant monies. Administrator Scott's alleged fault was due to his failure to provide aid to Deputy Volz upon request and giving the board misinformation or lying to the board. And whereas Deputy Volz alleged that county administrator Scott had been sabotaging Deputy Volz's efforts for at least 17 months. And whereas it was known that the county administrator Scott would not be present at the April 15th, 2025 meeting, where Deputy Volz leveled his accusations due to Administrator Scott's recovery from a significant medical procedure. And whereas during the past 17 months, no person from the sheriff's office informed the board of any of the issues raised by Deputy Volz, despite the fact that the sheriff or one of his deputies is present at every board meeting. And whereas, given the sheriff's failure to inform the board of the issues raised by Deputy Volz for the past 17 months, the board must know what, if any, other issues within Swanee County Emergency Management Agency have not been reported to the board. And whereas blaming the county administrator for the administrative failures of Swanee County Emergency Management Agency necessitates a third-party investigate the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency. And whereas the county attorney is the only county employee who works directly for the board and does not report to the county administrator. And whereas at the direction of chairman of the board, the county attorney has secured the services of Cherry Beckett Advisory LLC, Cherry Beckett. And whereas Cherry Beckett is uniquely qualified to audit how the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency has been run as it does forensic audits, grant management audits, and government management audits. And whereas Cherry Beckett is expected to deliver a report and recommendation to the board by August of 2025. And whereas Cherry Beckett is to report directly to the county attorney, the county attorney in turn shall report directly to the board as needed. And whereas the contract with Cherry Beckett was approved immediately before the board approved this resolution. And whereas the services to be provided by Cherry Beckett are not to exceed $108,700. And whereas the board does not take spending more than $100,000 to audit an agency over which it bears statutory and moral responsibility lightly. And whereas the money to be spent on the audit is outweighed by the irrevocably lost $7 million of grant monies, tens of millions of dollars of pending grant applications, and any other known, unknown issues or liabilities that may exist within the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency. And whereas the board met an emergency session to approve the Cherry Beckett audit, as it will be more than three weeks between regularly scheduled meetings of the board, and the time for Cherry Beckett to complete its work may run into hurricane season. And whereas it is of the gravest importance that all persons cooperate with Cherry Beckett audit, as the safety of the citizens and property of Swanee County is the most important value held by this board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County as follows. One, all Swanee County employees shall cooperate fully with the Cherry Beckett audit. Full cooperation means that whenever Cherry Beckett requests something of a county employee, fulfilling that task shall immediately be the highest priority task to complete. Should any Swanee County employee fail to comply with this directive, it shall be grounds for discipline in accordance to Swanee County's personnel policies. Two, all Swanee County contract employees up to and including the county administrator shall fully comply with the Cherry Beckett audit as defined by Paragraph 1 above. Failure to fully comply shall be grounds for termination of the contract. Three, to the extent the county retains control of the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency as the county is responsible for county emergency management operations per Florida Statute 252.38, all employees of the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency shall fully comply with the Cherry Beckett audit as defined in Paragraph 1 above. To the extent the employees of the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency are under the employee and control of the Swanee County Sheriff, the board is confident the sheriff joins the board in its commitment to the safety of the citizens of Swanee County and will issue a similar directive to the employees of the sheriff's office, including but not limited to the Swanee County Emergency Management Agency. Four, if Cherry Beckett discovers that any person has altered, destroyed, concealed, or removed any record, document, or other item which is relevant to the Cherry Beckett audit, Cherry Beckett shall refer that person to the appropriate authorities for the criminal offenses of tampering with evidence and violating the state sunshine and record retention laws. This resolution shall become effective upon its passing by the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida. Passed duly adopted, blah, 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 should it so pass. Now, now that we got through that lengthy thing, I'm going to ask board members, I was not present, is there anything, and all I have is a recollection of it from members in the audience that were here, is there anything in this resolution that is inaccurate?
Chairman?
Commissioner White?
I was here. I was running the meeting, and that pretty much sums it up.
Okay. Any other commissioners or anything else in this resolution that's inaccurate?
No.
Okay. So I have support from the board that this is an accurate resolution. Now, prior to my request for that meeting eight weeks ago, I knew nothing of the $7 million either. First I heard about it was over the phone with, from a member of the audience that was here a week ago today. You know, these aren't fun times. These aren't, these aren't waters that we look forward to running through, but unfortunately, we're here and we're going to have to deal with it. I'm going to ask this board to support this resolution. I'm going to ask this board to support this audit. Like I said earlier, I don't think anything bad comes from an audit. Yeah, it's $108,000, but if that $108,000 prevents us from losing another $7 million or to figure out how we can do that better, if that was my money, I'd spend it every day to do it this way. So I'm going to ask y'all for y'all's support when it comes time, but I'm also going to, I see we got a room full of people. I'm also going to open up that podium and that anybody that's present wishing to speak, do so before I ask this board for a vote. Is there anybody from the public or the audience wishing to speak? Just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And board members, if I left anything out or y'all want to say something, I'll give y'all an opportunity to do that as well in just a minute.
Eric K. Weaver, Jr., citizen of Swanee County, 65 years. I've known Greg Scott since we were five years old when we went to school. Mr. Greg Scott is beyond reproach. Not only is he a personal friend, but I've watched him professionally. Beyond reproach.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Name and address, please, sir.
Moses Klepper, 1458100, second level. I would see Mr. Volz's in the office. I'm disappointed with that. I think he should be here. I would be glad to be here, but I don't know why. Also, when I first got wind of this, of course I was for it, but I think we're making a mistake by limiting it to that department. I think, I think more than likely, I wager quite often, and I wager that this is typod iceberg in this county. I've been for four years telling y'all to do something like this. All right? And for the same reasons you said, Chairman, not to bust jobs or nothing, just the efficiency thing that we were sold on, that $55,000. It turned out to be just to give more pay raises, but actually, I thought we should have an efficiency audit. Then I think y'all should stop right here, open this up countywide. I tried my best. I had this, at 5:25 this morning, I had this idea, I wish it had happened yesterday. I called Bay County. They're the first ones volunteered. I called them this morning, and they can't tell me that the state paid for it, where the funding comes from, state doge. If y'all don't know the answer to who pays that state, the countywide state doge audit, please do not pass this. I know that everybody's in the room, everybody expects something happens, but if it's state-funded, we paid into that pool, all right? Since we're not a charter county, we're one of the 46 paying that state money. That money's available if that's how it's paid. Please do that, and for the very same reasons. Let's clean this county up. Let's start fresh. And I've been pleading to get that million, get the taxes down in this county. If we find, we're going to find holes in this one. During the campaign, I discovered a bunch of stuff about the sheriff's department, you know? The lack of transparency with the financial, where the money goes. Nobody in this room, with maybe three people, know where the money goes. That ain't like. I have what, $16 million or more? So opening up countywide, state doge is my formal request as taxpayer. And I realize that this one's like the focus this morning, but again, why would we want to pay $108,000 for one department audit when we may be able to use state funds to do a countywide audit unless, well, that's not.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Klepper. I will add to that, that doge, doge has been contacted by the county and we, the county will be utilizing doge for some auditing support.
That's why I'm like, did we?
I heard, I heard, I understand. Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Buddy Williams, 8827145th Drive, Live Oak, Florida. Just to speak a little bit, just so the general public knows, EMPA and EMPG is basically what runs emergency management. As we're all aware, in the last two and a half years, our county has taken some mass destruction. The response from EM and Director Volz has been phenomenal. And in fact, it's been probably better than anybody around. The EMPA and the EMPG monies, just so you guys know, is audited quarterly, which means the 23, 24 audits been completed with a quarterly audit of each year and then an end-of-the-year audit. So, you know, there's been 10 audits done on the finances for emergency management as we see it today. I agree with Mr. Klepper. You know, it's $108,000 of citizen money, and I'm first a citizen of 57 years, also a 37-year law enforcement professional, was involved with all of these responses and disasters. I'm not laying the blame on anybody. What I am saying is, as a community, we all need to be working together regardless of who we're pointing the finger at or to, but what happens is, is we get caught up in distractions and we're taken away from our traction. And, you know, we can talk about, there's been things in place, our LMS and all this other stuff where these dollars were available. Several of our entities within this county has applied for those dollars and gotten them. We've not received the dime of any of that money yet, just to make sure everybody's aware of that. And part of those projects that were put forward by the city and the county and the private sector, everybody else, they're in place. And then, like we talked to one from Brantford where they're trying to do it and they keep getting these RFI's, Request for Information's. So it's a long process that takes over and over and over again, and I think there's been some frustrations and miscommunications throughout this whole process. I don't know if this is the process to fix it. We're more than willing to comply with it, because like I said, our EM, our EM agency has already been audited 10 times, if you want to look at it that way, but we're welcoming another one. At the end of the day, I think that we've got to do better collectively. And I kind of relate it to, we're all acting like Nemo seagulls. If you don't know who they are, it's those little seagulls, mine, 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 and we've got to stop that. We've got to come together and do the best we can for these 47, probably 48,000. And that's the only thing I'll say is, is sometimes I think we spend dollars to spin our wheels, and I wasn't at the meeting. I don't know about the finger pointing. Is that right? No, it's not. We're all in this together. We're all in it as one. We need to act like it.
Amen. I fully, I fully agree with that. We're here where we're at, and I don't see no turning back from this audit, but the board's going to have to decide on that. I do believe, I agree with you. I think there's a lot of miscommunication, and that's the reason why I asked our county attorney to run point, so this audit is unbiased and no staff member from the county shall have any contact with Cherry Beckett unless Cherry Beckett approaches him first. The contact for the county is our county attorney who reports directly to the board. So if there's, if there's some issues on our side of the fence, then I want to know about them as well. So we can, if there's housekeeping that we need to do, then we need to know about that.
Just to be clear, I'm not blaming anybody.
No, I understood. I'm just saying, I think we're here and in order to prevent, like you said, the finger pointing, the finger pointing has been pointed at us, and if there's truth to that, these folks are going to tell us. If it's not, I don't want to get our guys versus y'all's guys, because obviously there's tension. There's been tension for 17 months of finger pointing, who's not doing what, you didn't give me this, I can't get that. The county suffered. So we're here, we're finger pointing already. So if the dirt's on my side of the fence, our side, this board's side, he's going to find out. We'll fix it on our side. If it's on your side, we'll share that with y'all. Y'all can fix it on your side. That's the way that I, that's the only fair way to do it. That's why I asked, I didn't want any accusations of this was a biased audit. That's why I asked him to run it. Anybody else from the public wishing to, Mr. Fleming? I didn't see you sneak in.
How's it going?
Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Good morning. Clyde Fleming, 206 Lewis Avenue, Live Oak, Florida. I was at the last meeting, and I heard bits and pieces of it. I don't like the finger pointing, accusation, accuse an individual, just get it right. Because the taxpayers suffer from the state that has made it. I like your approach from the chairman. I recognize the rest of the chairman and the attorney down in the middle there, but I feel as if you get it together, you was right, it'll take yourself. But I don't like that the board was accused and county administrator, I don't care about that. You just get it right, you do the audit. I'm not voting. I'm glad I'm not up there on that, make that decision, but it's taxpayers are the ones that suffer. I make some phone calls through my community, and I was told to call the EOC office. Well, to no avail. Trash is still down there, and all they're doing is creating roadies, and we're coming up, we're approaching another storm, so he said, and we're going to be back in the same boat, same situation, if we're going to get it right. So chairman, board, do what you got to do to get this problem situated. Thank you.
Mr. Fleming, I appreciate your comments. You've been up here for three terms. You've got a lot of knowledge there, and I think I agree with you. This board's not taking this lightly, and, you know, we just want to get it right, and we're going to ask these folks who are unbiased to help us get it right. Name and address. Yes, ma'am.
Sean Ketchrel, 4338128, pass level.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm sorry, I came in a couple minutes late, and I missed the very beginning of this. When is your audit supposed to take place?
If the board approves, oh, if the, Mr. Morrison?
If the board signs the resolution today, they'll get to work tomorrow.
And what is your anticipated timeframe for the findings to come out?
August.
August. Right in the winter season, roughly. Okay. I want to commend you for wanting to do the right thing for this county, for all the tax dollars that we pay every single year, and every time we get our asses handed to us, every storm season, and I feel like it just takes, by the time we get one cleaned up, the next one comes around, and I feel that if we were to have extra resources and for all the county to work together, as Lenny said, everybody collectively, I feel like we would be in a lot poorer place. I know a lot of you have been here for a very long time, and I would hate to think that everybody's personal wants and needs are being put above the citizens of this county. So I really thank you for taking this seriously and doing it right there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Got a couple. Go ahead. Name and address, please, sir.
Bohan Gock, 6135 Wiggent Road. This is disturbing as a taxpayer. Mr. Volz got up here, originally, when he started, I thought that he was just here to inform you of what was going on, and it turned out to be an attack. I questioned the timing of this. The sheriff did not speak. He left the meeting early, which I wasn't aware of until I, you know, after the meeting. Still hadn't heard anything from the sheriff, and I have not tried to call him. Instead of the sheriff getting up here and addressing you, he sends his chief deputy up. I don't like that. I did not elect Buddy Williams, the sheriff. We, the citizens, elected Sam St. John. When is he going to unbuckle his damn belt and come up here and talk to you and address you? He is in charge of emergency management. He runs it. I have not heard a word from him, and I, as a citizen, the only thing that I can do, if it comes down to it, is start a dead gum recall petition, because I think he needs to roll, set gonads and get up here and tell the public, the citizens of this county, what the problems are. Why did he cancel a meeting with the chairman in the attorney's office? What is he avoiding? Something is wrong. The last meeting was a dead gum ambush. Nothing in the agenda on this item, number one. Number two... Number two, the chairman wasn't here, and people knew he wasn't gonna be here. People knew that Greg Scott was not gonna be here. I'm gonna stand up here and look at the sheriff and say, "Sheriff, get your butt up here and then defend yourself," or not, your choice. But I'm not gonna ambush you. I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna do, and then I'm gonna do it. But this is something that should not have happened, there is a miscommunication. I don't think the Board has been kept informed, for whatever reason. I welcome the audit and the results, one way or the other. But we have got to get to the bottom of this. It cannot continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record.
Chris First, 15862 County Road 349. I'd like to address the Board, and thank you for all you do. I've owned a business in this town for 25 years, it's been pretty reputable, I've been audited. Welcome an audit. An audit tells you how you are doing, tells you what you're doing. If you don't welcome an audit, well, that speaks for itself. I welcome an audit, because I'm proud of what I've done. That said, there's been a lot of questions asked, people have called me, people have thrown a lot of people during hurricane season about various different things. Without an audit right now, none of these questions will ever be answered. So really, everyone should welcome it, who wants to know what happened, where things went, what was spent, what it was spent on, how it was spent, who benefited from it, and without an audit, we're right back where we are, and we'll do it all again, and we will be here doing this again. So this is, this is the option. So I, I say yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. First. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Name and, name and address.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Carter, 1475756th Street. I'm a retired audit partner with Brooklyn Larson Allen. I was an audit partner for 23 years. I'm familiar with Cherry Beckett, they're a quality firm, and I believe they'll do a good job with the county. I support you, and I believe we need to find out where the ball was dropped here. And I don't want to get ahead of myself, but just throwing it out, that if the ball was dropped on the sheriff's side, I think the Board should seriously consider taking emergency management back to the Board. I know a lot of counties have, the Board's over emergency management for a lot of counties and state boards, and we, but we definitely need to find out where the ball was dropped, so it don't happen again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Welcome, Sheriff. We know you, I don't think you need to say your name and address.
Back to me, Mr. Bo Hancock here. Let me tell you a little bit of backstory about what was going to take place, is that, you know, there was, which I talked to the chairman, you know, about some discrepancies between my employee and then county's employees and so forth. And so, you know, what my objective was, is to have Chris come up here and explain to the commissioners about just what's going on now, so they would get along. Now, we come up here, you know, he, you know, when we talked to Chris, you know, this, the money, the money that wasn't able to get, you know, we're not, you know, we're not pulling it to anybody, just the problem was, is that, you know, the, with the state and all of the grants and everything, gotta be right in the bow, and give, use them, and they be a silver plate, and that's not what was happening, you know? Here again, we're not pulling it to anybody, but I just had Chris come up here to not to, not to stir this up, by any means. I mean, this thing here was, this was not my intention whatsoever, it was just perhaps Chris come up here, since he's in charge of the EOC, is to let y'all know his progress, what was going on, and so forth, and here again, this thing has, obviously, has went sideways and all. And, you know, and as a sheriff of Swanee County, you know, my first responsibility is to get people of Swanee County, protect them and serve them and all, and that's, that's what we're trying to do, Mr. Bo, is let, is let Chris with EOC, you know, just kind of inform y'all. He, you know, Chris has done, you know, everybody knows we've had several hurricanes the last couple of years ago, Chris has done a fabulous job of managing all these storms and everything, and getting state help, getting money and so forth and everything. And, you know, and here again, with audit, I mean, obviously, the audit is coming and all, but I think a lot of this is more than an audit, I think it's more of a communication thing between all the different employees, and that and the information. A lot of this stuff, you know, is, I've been educated myself about how a grant works, and what you need, what you need to do to get a grant and so forth. So I think a lot of this, more than the audit, would be more of a communication and education issue that we're having versus the audit, which, you know, which I welcome audit and so forth, but I think we need to, everybody need to sit down, kind of, you take a step back and take a breath, and just, and let's just sit down and educate ourselves and talk, sit down, talk like adults, and get this all worked out. And that's, that's all, all we need to do. Here again, and that's, you know, to tell you again, my intention, Chris coming up here, was not to get this stirred up, fighting, because that might be my last intention. My intention was to inform the whole public, the commission about how their operation needs to work and all, and this thing, this title and all. But, you know, we're on a route to get it all worked out in a square way, so here again, you know, I just, I just think this would be a good opportunity to get, you know, this third party to come in, this mutual party, to sit down and talk to us all, and let, you know, let all of y'all know, public know, how these grants and how the EOC works, to where y'all help the benefit of this one county.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Sheriff. I mean, I fully agree with what you said, I think we do have a communication problem, clearly, and which I think necessitates for this audit, like you said, and a neutral third party to come in here and tell us, hey, you're doing this wrong, and you're doing that wrong, and they're doing this wrong, and they're doing that wrong, and let's, let's sit down and talk about it. Hence was one of the reasons I wanted to get together a couple, eight weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and let's try to figure this out privately, to get on the same page, and you guys refused to do so. So there is a communication problem, in which I sincerely hope that we can get fixed, because like you said, we all serve the citizens of this entire county, and the betterment of them is what we're here to do. So I appreciate, you know, your words on cooperating and welcoming the audit. Hopefully, these folks who are trained professionals can help us get through this, and we'll come out the other side, all of us in a better position. Board members, anybody want to comment, or have any, or is there anybody else from the, I guess I should ask if anybody else from the public wishing to speak, wishing to speak? I don't mean to shut y'all down, I'm sorry. And then we'll go to the Board members at the end. If any comments from y'all. Name, name and address.
Virginia Yetton, 14950 140th Street. Sheriff St. John, I'm glad that you think this is a good idea. We've been asking for transparency. How about with your department as well? I would like to see transparency there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, welcome. Name and address.
Wayne Hannika, 1188393rd Road. I'm just here to say, on behalf of concerned citizens in North Florida, that I feel like you're doing the right thing, and $108,000 is part of my money, but I have no problem spending it. So, I think you're doing the right thing, and you find out what's going on, and that's a good way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Hannika. Anyone else from the, welcome, sir. Name and address for the record when you get there, please.
Rich Harmon, 9341, 173rd, Terrace, Calvo. It's amazing that this is even taking place. That's what I don't get. My real question is, is this going to affect emergency management for the upcoming hurricane season? That's my real question.
I would have to defer that. I don't see it affecting emergency management whatsoever, those folks, I would hope are still gonna be there and still doing what they do, but I'd have to defer that to the, to the sheriff. Those guys and girls work for the sheriff, so, but I don't see that changing, I think the sheriff would agree. They're, they're still gonna be there, still doing what they do. Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Welcome, ma'am. Name and address, when you get there.
Name's Heather Henderson, address 611 5th Street, Southwest, Live Oak, 346th. I am the deputy director for emergency management, and I just want to say that we are completely gonna comply with your audit, and know it will not affect what we do. We are already in storm preparation, we have events set up for May 7th. We're just gonna keep rolling, we have nothing to hide. We have two grants, like you said, that are audited. You all have my cell phone number, you're all welcome to call me at any time if you have any questions or need to know anything. But just remember, we're a shop of two, and we have had five natural disasters open in 18, 20 months. That's a lot of documentation, a lot of paperwork, a lot of grants. It's a lot. It's not just, oh, we're just sitting in our office doing nothing all day. We have to deal with a vast amount of information, and we are the funnel in the cycle for a lot of these RFIs that are being, that we have to disseminate. So, as you're doing this audit, and as you're, as you guys are thinking about what's going on, just remember, there's only two of us, and it's a lot to juggle, and we just appreciate the support. We've done what we can for this community, we've used a lot of state assets, we've used a lot of mutual aid, and we still have access to those mutual aids should something happen this year. Thank you.
Ms. Henderson, thank you, and I will commend you on the job that, that is done over there. Not here to bash that whatsoever, I just, I want to, I want to see it done better on the backside, and I can assure you, had I known that you guys were short on labor or needed, needed assistance, I would have demanded our county staff get it for you, however that needed to be done. So, I commend y'all, there's two of y'all over there, I fully understand that, and if at any point y'all ever need help, additional labor, to help push those papers through, so that we do get that, this door's open all the time, just let us know. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public comment. Nobody else? All right. No one else from the public? Board members, if y'all want to wait a second for Mr. Perkins? If not, go ahead, you got any questions, comments, concerns, and anything that you heard, or any questions for myself, or Mr. Morrison, or anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. I think, I think this is the right thing to do. I don't, I don't know where the issue lies, but I think this will get to the bottom of what the issue is, and I don't like the finger pointing, I don't want to be pointing a finger, I just want clarity on what's went on, and how we fix it, and how we move forward, and that's just where I see it.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Anyone else, any comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Perkins, you got stepped out, Commissioner, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm with everyone else, I feel like we should do something here for the betterment of this county, and make sure that we are, are transparent, because I had a problem with is that, with getting the funding, we didn't have no procedure, or the time span of that funding, and we allow that to just slip away. So I just, there was no preparedness for this funding, what seemed to me. So, and I'm not just looking at only the EOC, but also any department that we have, to make sure we are efficient and proficient to handle these situations. So, I do welcome it, I mean, I was really hurt that, we seen this in another meeting, and Mr. Scott, you know, be done the way we were done, so I think we need to set some guidelines, parameters, and things here to have some type of resolve in this issue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, I agree with you. Anyone else want to comment? Okay. Mr. Morrison, before I ask him, ask him for a motion, we need to do the contract first or the resolution first? Which one do I need to ask for first?
The audit first, Mr. Chairman, and then the resolution.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the audit with Cherry Beckett?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner White? Have a second by Commissioner Perkins? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution affirming Swanee County's commitments to public safety and proper administration of Swanee County's Emergency Operations Center, declaring the necessity of an audit of the Emergency Operations Center requiring all county employees to cooperate with audit?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Well, folks, there you have it. These, like I said, these aren't fun times, we're not after, I believe this Board's not after any individual specifically, but we're after the truth and transparency, wherever that may fall. That's what we're searching for here, and I hope that that's, that's what we'll find, and we'll do better the next time around. Any other questions, comments from the Board? All I need is a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by, I'll go with Hale. Commissioner Hale, all in favor to adjourn, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero.